Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our presentation period here at the City Council. Our first presentation tonight is going to be the 2020 Census Proclamation, and I believe I have a couple gentlemen from the Census, so I don't know who wants to join me up front here.
This is a very important time of our nation when we get to count and do the things that are proper, and I'll let these gentlemen explain a little bit more. But I've been asked to give a proclamation, as I'm sure a lot of cities have, and so I'll read that proclamation. The City of Desert Hot Springs proclamation, whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by Article One, Section Two of the U.S. Constitution to conduct an accurate count of population every ten years. And whereas census data also helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and is used in the redistricting of state legislators, county boards of supervisors, and city councils. And whereas the decennial census is a huge undertaking that requires cross-section collaboration and partnership in order to achieve a complete and accurate count. And whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is facing several challenges with the 2020 census, which include declining response rates, technological change, fiscal constraints, thus support from local governments is critical. And whereas the City of Desert Hot Springs, in partnership with other local governments, the state, businesses, and community organizations, is committed to ensuring every resident is counted, and therefore be resolved that the City of Desert Hot Springs recognizes the importance of the 2020 census and supports participation in helping to ensure a complete, fair, and accurate count. So we're honored to do this for you, and I'll give you the mic to talk a little bit about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Just really quickly, before Thomas gets on, my name's Arturo, Dr. Arturo Hernandez, from the U.S. Census Bureau. I'm the lead partnership specialist that oversees all of Riverside County. Again, this is the time the United States Census Bureau is conducting this decennial. We only have, once the portal opens up for everyone to self-respond either online or by phone or by hard copy, we only have about a three-month period to take a snapshot picture of the population of the United States, which, again, we know that based on the number of count, that that equals to resources coming down to your community. That is my message. Thomas will talk a little bit more about the importance of it.
Well, I'll be very brief. I'd like to thank the city, all the council members and the staff for the work that they've done on the census so far, and I look forward to working, going forward with everybody much more closely to get as much done as we possibly can in the few days we have left. I think there are seventy-four days until April 1st, believe it or not. So, thank you so much for all the work you've done so far, and I look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
And what's some great opportunities here is that not only can you go on your computer and do this, you can do it by phone if they call you, and if these gentlemen or ladies show up to your home with these badges, you can, they can help you through the paperwork right then and there. But it is so important for Desert Hot Springs to participate in this because, again, it comes back to federal tax dollars and state boundaries for your legislators and everything else when it comes to looking at that. It won't happen again for, what, another ten years? So please participate as much as possible. Thank you, gentlemen, for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is going to be Desert Hot Springs' multi-year financial forecast presentation. And are we going to start? Jeffrey, are you starting, or is it?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is our, the multi-year financial forecast that we have done with, in conjunction with our financial consultant, Urban Futures. All right. So for a discussion outline, we have, I will discuss some historical financial data, some improvements and accomplishments that the city's been able to do, financial forecast results, and observations and trend analysis. As we can see here, this is over the five-year budget trend analysis for the last, which shows our revenues and expenditures, as well as the surpluses of the consolidated general fund over the last five years. The revenues are in the blue line, and you can see the expenditures are in the yellowish-orange line, and you can see from the, from the line in the middle, the numbers in the middle, we've had surpluses in the consolidated general fund for over $2 million. The cannabis, we've been receiving cannabis dispensary taxes since 2014, 2015, and it's been increasing. The state's also been receiving cannabis cultivation taxes beginning in 2016, 2017, and more, that revenue also increases as more facilities open up. Other revenue increases for the city include the transient occupancy tax, and because of the development within this city, we've had higher planning fees and permitting fees. The dip you see in fiscal year 1718, the surplus of over $459,000, is actually due to acquisition costs and beginning construction costs for the start of the city hall construction projects, and this is what just came out of the general fund, the consolidated general The next, this slide shows a more historical general fund performance. As we can see, the lines in the blue are the last five years. The lines in the reds are the five years preceding that, and as we can see that, during those five years, the city was running, you know, running in deficits and spending down its, its general fund balance, and now it's, in the last five years, the financial conditions have improved. Our next slide is the historical fund balance, and this is the consolidated general fund balance. As we can see, it's been growing over the last five years. It also includes, as you see in the top, kind of yellowish-orange is actually the emergency reserve fund, which is the 25% of marijuana tax revenues that we set aside. Over the years, it's been growing, and as of last fiscal year, fiscal year 1819, the consolidated general fund balance was 11.6 million, of which our emergency reserve fund has increased to 1.3 million. Our next slide, you know, the little things that you do that make the big things happen today. So, and for our next slide, you can see some, what we've been able to do from some of the decisions we've made. The city's financial outlook has improved, that S&amp;P has increased the city, the rating on city bonds to A-plus status. The higher revenues have allowed the city to expand services such as animal control, community development, code enforcement, and economic development. The city's been able to complete much-needed items, such as a general plan update, housing element, new pavement management plan, improved software, and be able to provide more support to the community. The city's been able to replace outdated heavy equipment, or be able to provide improved compensation packages to attract and retain quality of staff. We were able to increase the public safety presence and created a cannabis compliance team with our new cannabis developments. And so, from this point on, I'd like to introduce Michael Bush from Urban Futures, who will discuss just the financial, the future outlook, as well as a trends and analysis.
Good evening, Members of the City Council. My name is Michael Bush. It's a pleasure to be before you again. As the council is aware, we've been working with your staff, I think this is our 12th year, on financial items, and recently, one of my staff members, Andy Heath, which you've, we've met before, worked with Jeffrey and his team to analyze what the history has resulted in, and certainly what, what things look like going forward. So the slide you see in front of you is a projection. As you can see, things continue to look good. It's a great message. I think what Jeffrey shared with you tonight remains to be a positive, go-forward view. There are obviously some needs that need to be looked at going forward, and discussions I've had with your city manager and with Jeffrey as part of your next year's budget process, there are a couple things we're going to look at in greater detail. One is what's going on with cannabis within the city and statewide. We'll look at that. We're going to kind of look at what the history looks like from the point of recessions, to see if there needs to be some recessionary model that we develop as part of that, and then also, you know, we're going to look at what happens when certain things happen within the city. So as you can see with this slide, again, everything looks very positive, similar to the other slides that Jeffrey shared with you, but lingering behind that is this item related to CalPERS. And so as you recall, several months ago, we provided a presentation that was detailed on what had happened with CalPERS and how you got to your current level of unfunded liability. Although you do see a growth here, this is one of the areas where we see the strongest growth in your forecast going forward relative to your entire operation. This is a similar circumstance we see throughout the state of California. If it makes you feel any better, you level off in a couple of years where other cities grow tremendously beyond this point. Most cities peak in about 2031, 32. You smooth out much sooner than that. Your growth is somewhat relative, so you have a significant increase of several hundred thousand dollars between now and that point. Other communities, even in the desert area, they go by millions a year, every year, they got to have a million more, two million more. So relatively speaking, you're not in a bad spot. We believe, however, that your positive results over the last several years and what we see going forward, we can present a plan that will help you actively manage this going forward, and so that's something we'll put together. So the three items that we've talked about, and I think the most important certainly are how to manage the cannabis, and obviously, the pension liabilities are something that I, I think are of concern to all of you, and the ability for the community to operate. And speaking with your city manager today, we want to prepare that work as part of your budget process. The goal, and I'll state it so it's cannibal to me, is to have that information to you by March, so you can make that decision as part of you, when you put your budget together. I believe we can make that happen, so it may be a series of meetings to talk about them. There'll be several options related to certainly how to manage the CalPERS situation, but whatever decision ultimately that you decide to make as a policy, we think we can put into the budget starting next year. The goal, obviously, I don't think we're done. This is great news, but I think the goal that the city manager and Jeffrey and I have is to continue to grow the reserves, to continue to provide the high level of services that you've strived for, and certainly make sure the community is sustainable. It's been my experience over the 12 years that, at some point, I think we got a little comfortable with where balances were. They were sustainable at about five and a half million for years. I think what we've learned is that was never enough money. You see levels of, in excess of 11 million now. Certainly, that's at a historic high from my experience here in the last 12 years, and probably much further beyond that. You know, I think what we should look at is, you know, some stress test of your reserve levels. We can look at the weaknesses that you have in your community related to finance. So as the council is aware, when we had the last recession in 2008, there was a tremendous drop in property tax, and it stayed down for a long period of time. In preparing for tonight, I looked at an old presentation, and during that period of time, which I looked at from the, from the recession, I think it was out four or five years, from the date of the recession, the city had lost $9 million of property tax revenue in five years. And so, 9 million would eat up almost all your reserve if you wanted to continue to provide service at your current levels. And so the goal of looking at this type of analysis is determine what should the reserve levels be? Should it be 40%, 50%, 100% of expenditure? So that's something we're also going to come back with in March, and we're going to look at basically the revenue streams and the expenses that you have, and we'll decide how to view those in terms of coming up with maybe a revision to your current reserve policies, and possibly a recommendation for including in your budget some money automatically to get set aside to the reserve account, as opposed to just surplus revenues per year, maybe you budget for it as well, so you can continue to build that up. So, the goal is to continue to show positive trends. I put a couple closing thoughts up here. You know, persistence and preparation, you know, something that I think this council and the community has been supporting for many years now. I think that's how you got here from those dire days. Russell's been here long enough to know that there was one, one pretty damning report that I gave the council in 2012, and even before that, that, you know, I'm not proud of it, but some of the recommendations and, and thoughts actually came to fruition, which were really scary. Going forward, I think, you know, what you've done to date and what you continue to do will be needed to continue down that positive path. I could tell you your city manager is very focused on continuing to provide the level of service that you're asking for. Economic development continues to be a priority, and I'm hearing about projects coming to the city. You know, that hasn't always been the case, but people are seeking you out now, and you're in a position to make things happen, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue with that. Your credit rating's the highest it's ever been. It's going to be maintained at that level, I think, for the seeable future, so that's also good news. And then I think we've just got to narrow the focus down on the priorities that you guys are going to have in order to be efficient and effective in how you deliver the service. And so, as we come from this part of study, we're going to start narrowing it down to the specifics that you need, and it'll all probably start around March or April when we really get into the weeds of some of the things that will drive you going forward, and then to keep a close eye on things so things don't move away too fast. I think what we saw in the last recession, took a while to react to it, you know, a lot of, a lot of changes had to happen to make the city balanced. There were tough decisions along the way. The goal going forward is to try and minimize that so that you're more prepared to take action when appropriate. I can't tell you when there's going to be a recession, but we all know it's California, there are recessions. They've been happening, on average, about every eight years. We're a little overdue, so it keeps coming up. When's the next one? When's the next one? I don't see anything on the horizon, but that doesn't mean one won't appear in the next year or two, but they're there. Across the state, the other thing I'm hearing that may be of concern for you, revenues are peaking out in a lot of other communities, sales tax, property tax. Here, we haven't quite seen that yet, but it's likely trailing behind the others, but not, not very far. Honestly, I think part of that is just disposable incomes. There's only so much that people have to spend on goods and services, and eventually, those things kind of peak. Hopefully, here with new development opportunities and opportunities, you'll continue to grow over the next, next phase. City manager shared with me today, you've had 100 infill homes in the last year. That's a lot for Desert Hot Springs compared to where you've been historically. There's probably been 25% of that, you know, when you look backwards. So things are happening here, which I think is all good news. So, we're going to keep working together, Jeffrey and I talk all the time, city manager and I talk all the time. We'll keep doing it. For as long as you'll have me, I'll keep coming back here and giving you my insight onto how I think things are performing, and I made a commitment to you many years ago when I recommended that my brother buy a house here that I was in to the end, and so I'm, I'm still here for as long as you guys will have me. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, Michael. You've been a rock for us financially, given, or given us the advice financially and helping us through that terrible recession that we had, and getting us to a healthy, healthy spot, healthier than the city's ever been. So appreciate all your hard work. I know there's some questions by the council. Anyone?
I just wanted to echo the mayor's sentiments. Thank you. You've been here through some really tough times, and, you know, it's much better to see you here when we got these, this good report coming forward, and I like what you're, you've said about, you know, taking a look at what's on the horizon, because what we don't want to do is end up back where we were before. And I think along those lines, it's going to have to be some type of trigger mechanism, I think, would be developed that, because sometimes politically here, it's tough to make some moves soon enough, and I think if we could develop something into this program that you're going to put together for March that has trigger mechanisms that say, okay, here, your council, this is automatic, here's where you should start considering making some moves, so it slaps all of us in the face, that says, you know what, and then it'll be our choice whether or not to ignore those, but I think that would be probably something that I'd want to see going forward when we address this in March. But thanks for, you know, all the financial picture and guidance you've provided, it's been very, very much appreciated in the city.
You're welcome. You're welcome, Councilman Betts. You know, I think you make a good point. The challenge that we have recessions, we don't know how deep and we don't know how long, and so while people put away reserves for economic uncertainties, you know, there's natural fiscal emergencies, there's other things that can happen, and you really have to be prepared for whatever may come and be able to react to that. What I've seen across, you know, certainly Southern California and much of the state, is people try to anticipate recession length, and sometimes they're wrong, and then they deep, dig deeper and deeper, and, you know, what's unique, I think, about, about this city is it does seem to linger a little bit longer than other areas, unfortunately. And so being prepared with a plan that maybe addresses, you know, that specifically, and the goal, again, I can't under, underestimate the importance of making sure you can continue to provide the basic level of service that you've all worked so hard to create and maintain since then. At some point, there has to be a line where you say, look, this is it. You know, we're going to, from this point, we're going to manage appropriately, and I think that's exactly what we're going to come up with.
Anyone else? Michael, thank you for your time. Thank you to our staff. Jeffrey, anything else to add at the end? That's it?
No.
Just for the audience, and people watching at home, we ask for a presentation from Urban Futures, who are our financial consultant a couple times a year, and so you get an opportunity to see how the city's doing financially and keep it very transparent, so. It's not an agenda item, so there's not a back and forth, but there are items will be coming forth, decisions by council will have to make in the future during the budget cycle. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the introduction and swearing-in of new police officer, and that'll be our police chief, Jim Henson, and our city clerk, Jerro Sirano, who will be doing the swearing-in or swearing-out.
Mayor, City Council, this is becoming almost a, every council meeting, agenda, new police officer. I think we have another one coming next City Council meeting, correct? Tom?
And apparently, I must have made Tom mad because the font is like 8. I usually look for 36, so I'm going to try to get through this. I'd like to introduce Officer Emmanuel Arista. Attending tonight is Joel Arista Sr., his father, his mother Teresa Arista, his brother Joel Arista Jr., his brother Andrew Arista, Sergeant Acevedo from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, his cousin, another cousin, Riverside Sheriff's Correction Deputy Acevedo, and Officer Kenneth Miranda with Palm Springs Police Department. Please welcome our new police officer, Emmanuel Arista. Officer Arista was born and raised here in the Coachella Valley. He graduated from Indio High School in 2011, so he is 21. While he was at Indio High School, he was on the swim team and wrestling team. Immediately after high school, Officer Arista attended College of the Desert, where he studied criminal justice. While at College of the Desert, he self-sponsored himself through the Extended Module Academy. Officer Arista successfully completed Module Three and Module Two during his time at College of the Desert. To finish his police academy training, Officer Arista successfully completed Module One with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department at the Blaine Clark Training Center. Officer Emmanuel Arista, come on up. Sergeant Acevedo. Yep. Now you get to speak, so come on up and confirm your 21, correct?
Bear with me, I'm a little emotional right now. I'm extremely grateful to be here. I just wanted to thank the City of Desert Hot Springs, Desert Hot Springs Police Department, Chief Henson, Mr. Tom Penninger for believing in me. I feel like a small-town kid, so this is a dream come true for me. Thank you to all the residents, friends, and family. I couldn't have done it without you guys, without you guys, sorry. I'm excited for this journey to come, and I just, words can't describe how, how happy I am right now to be here. This isn't just a job. To me, it's, it's a lot more than that, so thank you guys for being here.
And we're hoping to keep this edge tradition. As you know, College of the Desert is now going to be offering Module One, Two, so we're hoping to keep our officers here from the Coachella Valley, so we're really excited about having this officer here. Jerro?
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Officer Emmanuel Arista, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Yes, sir.
That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California?
Yes, sir.
That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Yes, sir.
And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, if I could get his family and friends to come on up?
And the City Council will recess for right now, and they can take pictures and everything. Congratulations, and please be safe out there. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council, and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for January 21st, 2020. Wow, already there. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Pye?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith?
Present.
And Mayor Mattis?
Present. Tonight, we have one of our reverends from The Word of Life, Kefion Shepherd, that will be doing our invocation. After that, we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll start with our Mayor Pro Tem, Robert Griffith, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend?
I pray, God, we honor you. I we thank you for this day. We pray that you go ahead of us on tonight. Lord, let the spirit of unity dwell in this place, God, and, Lord, let everything that needs to be done be accomplished, and we thank you for all that you're about to do in our city. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
And before you leave that podium, I wanted to thank you and the Ministerial Fellowship for the MLK Walk yesterday, organizing that. It was, it wasn't small, it was actually a large group, but the way you made it sound at the end of that, it's going to be two times that next year, if not more, so thank you for all the work you did on that. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Rahi, you're going to give, our city attorney's going to give the report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. We have one reportable item, which is on item number three, conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. The vote was 4-1, with Councilmember Betts voting in the negative, to commence action against a specific party. Any other particulars, once formal, once the action is formally... a specific party. Any other particulars, once the action is formally commenced, that party can inquire into the city, and we will provide them with that information at that time.
Thank you. And next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Don't hear anybody. Would anybody in the audience like to speak on the consent calendar items? That's items 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. I see nobody coming forth. At this time, I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar and approval of the agenda in whole. There is a motion and a second. Please vote. Anyone in the audience, if you have discussion or anything, we just ask you to step out of the room so that you don't disturb the meeting. Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, public comments. This is, at this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the items. So this is a time that if you're here to talk about something that's not on our agenda tonight, this is the time that you would come up. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Comments are listed, all comments are to be directed to the city council, and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. All right, so I have a couple, and the first one's going to be Melanie Lyons from our senior center.
Good evening. I'm Melanie. I am coming here to let you guys know that we have a talent show this Friday and to invite you guys to attend. We have about 10 acts, and it will definitely be a show that you do not want to miss. We've had two rehearsals, and it's definitely going to be a show you don't want to miss. And I have for you guys the schedule for February upcoming. We're going to be taking four field trips this coming month, one to see Bernard Hoy's exhibit at San Bernardino County Museum, two to the date festival, and another one for the casino. We're going to Red Earth this time, so we're going to go visit the Salt and State. So we're trying to kind of hit every single one. So thank you so much for the use of the bus, and the seniors appreciate it, and they really love the trips. Also, another announcement, we partnered with Community Action, and we are offering taxes at the Senior Center. And it's not strictly just for seniors. It is for anybody who makes under $70,000 a year. You can come to the center, and, well, you would have to call the center and make an appointment, or you could come to the center and make an appointment. They will be every Tuesday and Thursday from 9:00 to 1:00. We will be doing that all the way through April 15th. I strongly encourage everybody to use it, because most of the time, if you go into any type of tax agency to get your taxes done, even if it's a simple return, it costs about $300 on TurboTax. It costs about $150. So this is a free service. If you earn under $70,000 a year, please call the Senior Center, and we're really excited to bring this to the community. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Did a wonderful job. Pat Yarborough?
Oh.
Followed by Beverly, is it Wheatley?
Wiley.
Wiley.
Thank you, sir, and good evening. My last name is Yarborough.
Yarborough.
You one I might like to speak to. Well, and another thing, what I came for, I spoke to Mr. Betts at the Christmas party. There's some things that needs to be done for seniors that need help. I spoke with Rich, the guy on the news, Channel 3, and he says, "Well, let me call the mayor, and the mayor will do something." Nobody did anything. There's people over there can hardly eat. They don't, I know it's good for children. I'm a counselor myself, and I'm a minister. I care about kids, but I care about people. I'm 86, or I will be in March. And I care. I take care of seniors over where I live, and I try to help a lot of people. But seniors need some help in this city. They really do. But I called Rich back after Christmas. I wanted to get some baskets and stuff for people. I made some baskets myself of fruit and food and took it to different people. But Rich said he called you, and you never answered. You never called me. And I was very disappointed because I spoke to Mr. Betts about this at the Christmas party. So that was my first, my one complaint. I have another, you know, over there at Sky's Haven, they've been doing a lot of work on the road, and I understand that. But we've had people almost get killed over there. We need a light there. Seniors come and go, in and out, in and out. And people don't pay attention. They don't even slow down. They just [spits]. Today, I was coming home from the doctor's office, and I was turning my blinker on. I was trying to get over to the left lane to go in to Sky's Haven. These people come in the other direction. They get in there right at Sky's Haven to turn left at that light up there. I was almost hit head-on. I had to jump back over in the lane. So something has to be. I never see an officer. We need an officer, you know, we do. We need an officer there sometime, hiding and watching, and he can see what's going on. But there's going to be some more deaths. These people are getting older, and they're driving. I drive. I've been driving since I was 11 years old, and I don't have any problems. I watch, but some of them don't. I would appreciate some action, sir.
Yeah, why don't you leave your number with them, because I did get a number from Rich, and I thought I left you a message, but maybe it was a mix-up in the numbers. So I apologize. We weren't able to connect before the holiday, but Roberta will get your number. We'll make sure to get you in my office next week.
Oh, thank you. I mean, we need help now, too, not just at Christmas. God bless you and have a blessed evening.
Thank you so much. Beverly? Beverly's my last speaker card tonight. If anyone else would like to speak on any items that are not on the agenda, even if you're here for another item on the agenda, and you want to speak on a different item, you're more than welcome to do that. This is public comments. This is the second to final call.
Hi, my name is Beverly Watley, and I reside at Sky Haven Mobile Park. The issue I want to bring up to you is about the Palm Drive, right in front of it. I find it's very dangerous if you try to make a left turn in the middle of Palm Drive. You really need a stop signal there, because I've seen too many accidents. One of our senior, she's a member at my church, her son, last year, was coming across from Aqua Soleil, which was at night, and he was hit by a car, Land Rover, she told me about it, and he was at Desert Regional Hospital in ICU for three months. And we prayed for him to recover. He had a remarkable recovery, critical condition. So it's been a lot of accidents on Palm Drive, because people are driving real fast. And I usually, when I leave out of, out of front of Sky Haven, I make a right-hand turn, going straight up, and get to the signal stoplight, because I feel safer when you turn left. I forgot the street name, but I feel safer that way than to try to make a left turn in the middle of Palm Drive. It's too dangerous. So that's the issue that I wanted to address.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public comments? This is the final call? Okay, we'll close public comments at this point. We'll go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like, Danny, to talk a little bit about the Palm Drive paving project and where it's at now and what our frustrations have been with that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Over the Christmas break, we completed a portion of the Palm Drive project. Before Christmas, there was the underground conduits that were installed. There was sidewalk that was installed, and there was fiber that was installed. And during Christmas and New Year's holiday, the asphalt portion began. The asphalt portion consisted of one and a half inch grind. After the asphalt was grinded, it consisted of crack seal, so the cracks that were seen through were actually sealed. And then after that, there was one and a half inches installed right back on the existing concrete. And then following that will be new striping and markings. During the pavement, we found some issues that were happening with the asphalt finish, with the seams, and with the asphalt mix design. Some repairs have been done, but not a repairs are completed, and more repairs will continue to be done as needed. The city completed a third-party inspection, and we also got a geotechnical engineer out there yesterday that's completing multiple core samples, doing a mixed-design laboratory test of the existing asphalt and the condition, and doing field density tests and moisture contents of what's out there to make sure that the asphalt that was installed is going to be capable of surviving the right life for the actual job itself, and making recommendations for any future repairs to move forward before we do any striping and markings. As soon as those reports are received, we'll move on to the striping and marking portion of the project. During the same time, we're also installing streetlights. There has been eight streetlights that were energized last Thursday. There are going to be a total of 34 streetlights from Community of Ventura all the way up to Tubman, which Sky Haven is actually right in that area as well. The total 34 will begin energizing this week, and they will be completely energized by next week. So you will see 34 new streetlights, all LED, all of them energized by next week. There's also some safety warning signs that have been installed front and behind every bus stop from Community of Ventura all the way to Tubman, just warning pedestrians and warning drivers that there is pedestrians exiting and entering the buses on those areas as well. All that is expected to be finished by the end of January. We also have a undergrounding project where the poles on the west side of Palm Drive will be eliminated, and the wires will be undergrounded. So there's actually been service interruptions during that time. Last Thursday, last Friday, Spectrum had to switch the service. This Thursday and this Friday, they will be switching service again, and starting next Monday, they will be removing those poles as well. So those poles will be eliminated, and only the streetlight poles will be remaining. The second phase of that project will begin, we actually have a pre-con this Thursday, and will begin in February, where it'll be a similar scope of work, an asphalt rehab on both sides of the street, brand-new streetlights, brand-new warning lights, and future conduit for traffic synchronization. So we'll have, and actually, 24 streetlights as well on that street. So continue, we're going to continue our project on Phase Two, and then we'll move on to Phase Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Move on to mayor and councilmember comments. Who would like to start tonight? Ms. Pye?
First of all, can the camera turn to Robert Griffith, please? He is the Mayor Pro Tem. I got mistaken several times at Coachella Valley Association of Governments, at a couple of Martin Luther King events. And I just want to make sure everyone knows that Robert Griffith is the Mayor Pro Tem.
She just doesn't want to represent me anymore when she goes out, because she's, she said I'll do it for one year. That was the contract.
No.
Okay.
I told you I don't want to be mayor, and so I'm away from it now.
I was trying to make it sound nicer.
The homeless committee meets on May 28th, and the reason why I'm telling you and not just the homeless committee is because I'm inviting an officer from the probationary department. And so if anyone wants to come, it's on January 28th, and it's here at 6:00 PM. Also, the Palm Springs City Council received $10 million for homeless shelter, and they will be having a meeting at 5:30 on January 29th. They want to make it a regional area for the west side of the valley, and that would be inclusive of us and Cathedral City. Honestly, I don't know what their constituents will say, but that's why I'm going to be there. And also, the governor wants a constitutional amendment for people that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing for homeless. I'm not in agreement with a constitutional amendment. We all have different areas. So the League of California City is fighting against this or debating against it, and I'm going to join with them. As I said, I went to several Martin Luther King events. I went to the First Community Baptist Church on January 18th, and they had a panel discussion. And the panel discussion involved Lauren Silver, Steve, Lauren Silver is with the CEO for Sunline Transit Agency, Steve Parkin, Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, Dr. Sandra Lyon, Superintendent of the Palm Springs Unified School District, Assemblyman Edward Garcia, 56th District, Jim Henson, our Chief of Police, and myself. And they asked several questions. The questions were good, but sometimes you think people know stuff, and then you go someplace and they don't know stuff. So it was a good panel. On the 34th Annual Martin Luther King Commemorating Celebration, that's in Palm Springs, but it's given by, the chairman of it is a member of our city, is Jarvis Crawford. And it was a very emotional thing. And generally, what I do is have all of the city councils sign a certificate. Last year, I forgot to sign it, but this year, I did sign it. There was a student youth speaker, and she lives in Desert Hot Springs, and her name is Sarah Escado, and she's with the Black Student Union of Palm Springs High School, and she gave a very interesting speech regarding how her life has changed because of Martin Luther King. On the 20th, I did the march. It was very good. And I want to thank Chief Henson. I gave you the information. I just thought you'd have people walking on the sidewalk, but excellent. It was a very good march, and I thank you for that. On the 20th, I also attended the program, again, at First Community Baptist Church. And there were, well, there were several people, take that back, at the panelists, Sergeant Saucer of the Police Officer Association gave to the church $500 to contribute to their participants, youth participants at their events on May 20th. And what they did, part of it, they gave a big salute to the police department, what happened to be their biggest donor. So you got some receipts, and I'll explain receipts to you in a moment. During the, during the ceremony, Pastor Baylock asked me, in the vein of Martin Luther King Day, what are the politics in Desert Hot Springs? Usually, I talk about how my daughter, I brought her here at eight years old, single parent, and I usually talk about how Desert Hot Springs helped me raise my daughter. And they did. I had little, this was before I was on the council, I had little, I would have people call me and say, "Your daughter's at Rite Aid. Should she be at Rite Aid?" I had a lot of people help me. But then, when he asked me that question, I said, "There's got to be something else, and it's not just about us working with Dr. King." There's a passage in the Black National Anthem that says, "Facing the rising sun of how new day begun, let us march on..." let us march on till victory is won." Now, when we get victory, that says to me, now I'm supposed to change because now I have equality, and I need to put that back. My oldest granddaughter is fifteen years old, and you have to pay attention to what they say. Well, I have to, so I can talk to her. And they're always talking about receipts, and I don't know what receipts are about. So finally, I got it. So when I walked up and spoke about this to Pastor Baycock and the people that were in his, in his center, sorry, I get emotional, I said, "In city government, we get receipts. We get receipts from the people that vote for us. We have a city council, and I'm gonna call you the board because you've got too many LGBGTs behind me, so I call you the board." We have two members of the board, we have me as a black person who has been here since nineteen ninety-nine, and we have two white people. Guess what? We all get along amokabuli. That's progress, and you voted for us. We have police officers, who at one time, another administration told me, "We need to have more Hispanics," and I said, "No, we don't. We need the best police officers that we can have." You saw Mr. Ortiz stand up today. He made me cry. He walked up, like all of our police officers. He walked up because he wanted to be here. Oh, by the way, he's Hispanic. They all walked up. They all get along. And you gave receipts to our police department because you said you want our police department. You don't want the sheriffs. You want our police department. So Chief Henson, you got your receipts. We have black people on different commissions, we have citizens on different commission, women on different commissions. I'm going to say to you that we won, and we have already started Martin Luther King's dream. And so it's not about what happened, what we're trying to strive for. We have already started it, and all we need to do is keep going in that direction. Honorable Mayor, I'm done.
You've known Ms. Pye for a long time, and that is very powerful. Thank you. Mr. Betts?
You know, I was going to take myself out of the queue and put myself back in because that's a tough act to follow, so I'll get onto the boring and mundane after that, good comments. I attended the same forum that, I was going to call you Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Pye attended, and it was really, really well-done. It discussed transportation, homelessness, schools, education, and business here in the city. And I think what made it so interesting is that the moderator who put this on and developed the questions was asking questions that if you have somebody who's ground up in the mix, they ask these esoteric questions that don't really touch on the everyday issues. And when you sit here in this position every once in a while, you'll get a question that you think, "Wow, well, that seems pretty obvious." Like, "Well, can I attend a council meeting?" Well, of course. Well, all of you know you can attend a council meeting, but unbelievably, there's people other that don't know they can attend. So what made that forum so good was that there was such an interesting mix of basic questions, and I went there thinking, "Well, what's this going to be? Is this going to be interesting or not?" And, you know, I put out a call to a few people, "Come on down here. This is really, really interesting discussion." So I hope they do that again. Now, one of the panelists there was Lawrence Skiver, who's the CEO of Sunline. She does a great job down there. And I'm the council representative to the Sunline Transit Agency Board. Good, I'll be down there tomorrow at a meeting discussing issues down there. But one subject that keeps coming up is sundial, which is where you dial for the ride, and they come pick you up, and then Sunline Transit, which is the regular fixed route buses. And I can't get into all those issues because there's not enough time, but I wanted to just give a quick, brief, maybe take a couple minutes to explain the two, and then give you a little report on Sunline, a little more in-depth than what I normally do. Sundial is for people who are disabled, not able to make their way to the regular bus line, and so they will come to your home and pick you up. There's always somebody who's outside the service area, maybe two miles outside the service area, they can't understand, "Well, why don't they come pick me up?" Well, sundial runs only three-quarters of a mile from the main route, and that's by law. We don't have a lot of discretion on some of that. But the sundial, it runs completely free, nobody's charged for that bus, and it makes a hundred thousand trips annually. But it's, if we take any, if we accept any federal funds, which is completely necessary for the fixed bus route to continue, then we have to provide the paratransit service, which we do. Now, you've seen the big buses that run around, and somebody says, "Why are they always empty?" Well, they're not always empty. All the buses, at some point in time, well, when they leave the bus station in the morning, they're empty, but then they gradually fill up. And sometimes they're full when they get to the end of the route, but, you know, if you see them running around empty, that Lawrence Skiver will tell you this, the number-one question she gets is, "Well, why is the bus empty?" Well, it's because you looked at it at a point in time when it was empty, but I guarantee you that somewhere along that route, the bus has to be full enough to justify the operation, and we've got those stats. So you'll see some new buses coming along. If you notice, the buses now, they have to lift somebody about six feet up to get them inside, and we've got how many different new buses coming on for the sundial that will actually be at curb level, so somebody can just wheel right on, and it'll also provide more than just two spaces. Sometimes the system gets so full that, you know, there's not enough chairs or spaces, and they dispatch another bus. So, you know, there's so much that goes on into this, and I was listening to her speak, and even though I've heard it a bunch of times, she does it much better than I do, but I wanted to try and bring some of that to here. But Sunline moves more than four-point-five million fares in a year. It's just hard to believe that, you know, and it just, we have three routes here. Route fourteen, which we all know takes us down to the valley, and then we have Route Fifteen that runs through the city, and then we have Express Route Twenty, which gets you down to the universities for the college kids. And each one of those has a, you know, we get these numbers from them each once a month that shows how they're performing. And one of the things you get when you're on the Sunline board and somebody finds out about it is if the bus leaves early, man, do you hear about it from somebody? "Hey, I was here at the bus stop on time, and I found out it left early, and now I'm going to be late." So, you know, we go down there, and I said, we started hammering them on that, and want to try and get some improvement. The early departure is the easiest thing to correct. If the bus driver leaves early, well, that's the most controllable situation. Arriving at a bus stop late, well, that can be, you know, another story. I mean, you've got something came in the way, construction, a traffic jam, whatever. But leaving early is a big no-no, and the goal is a hundred percent. So if anybody wants to see this, I'm happy to show it to you, but, you know, we started out with one percent late two years ago. We're down to one percent earlier departure, and now we're down to point zero three. So it's just, the whole idea is just try and make everything operate as well you can. And so we've got the online performance, and then on the, what's interesting, the last thing I'll show you here, I'm boring you to death on Sunline, is you can see each route here and how busy they are. And this is Line Fourteen, and these are all the routes throughout all of Sunline's service area. I know it's hard to see, but fourteen and fifteen and twenty represent a huge percentage of Sunline's activity. We are a very important part of the Sunline, so it's that Sunline system. So we're going to keep pushing on that. If anybody's got any questions, give me a call. I usually get them mostly from the riders, but if there's regular riders out there, there's something you see that you need, let me know. We're focusing on that. All right, so that was that. The, it was a long break, lots of interaction with residents on various issues. Most of the agencies where we sit on, you know, outside boards and commissions were dark. The only one that I have had a meeting with was Airport Land Use Commission. SCAG is meeting next week. There's some interesting news there. I think I'll pass that along to the council. I already get the city manager and the mayor is that Housing and Community Development has accepted the methodology for the Rena numbers, which is good for us. Orange County isn't very happy. They're getting ready to sue. They ended up getting dumped on with a whole bunch of numbers that they didn't like, and we finally got some reasonable numbers that we can actually live with and work with. I'll wrap it up here. I have a more detailed report next time, but I just wanted to try and get you a little bit of depth on Sunline. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start my year of sitting up here, I don't think I've ever been more proud to sit next to Councilwoman Pye. Thank you. I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday season. I was fortunate to spend a bunch of it up in Utah with my family, although it was not terribly cold and snowy for once. It's always good to be back here in the desert. I'm going to reach back a little bit on my report. I wanted to publicly thank our city staff, especially Roberta Cernick and Doria Wilms, for planning, producing, and putting together our wonderful holiday parade and festival. That was, you knocked it out of the park. You knocked it out of the park. It was absolutely one of the best events in the city. I know how hard you worked on it. You guys were sick. Both of you were sick afterwards. You worked so hard on it. It was absolutely amazing, and everybody I've spoke with has loved it, said we should do that more often. I don't know if you want to do it more often, it'll probably wear you out, but I also want to give kudos to our Public Works Department for the new trash bins over at Tedesco Park. That park had been looking a little bad, a little trashy before the holidays because of trash, missing cans, and cans without lids that allowed these herds of crows to come in and take trash out and throw them all over the park. And those new cans have stopped that. I've walked through there every morning, and it looks a hundred times better, Danny, so great job over there on that. Attended the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy meeting. I'm fortunate to serve on that board, and nothing terribly significant to report this year was basically a reorganization thing, but I was honored to be elected to serve as Vice-Chair of that commission this coming year. Attended the DHS Historical Society Soup Supper, where our mayor graciously filled in for the Assistant City Manager, kind of a mini State of the City presentation. If you haven't joined the Historical Society yet, it is a great organization, lots of stuff going on this year with them, and because it is their anniversary, they're offering memberships this year for the pricey sum of three bucks, less than a Starbucks cup of coffee. It's their original fee from fifty-five years ago. Attended the community forum at First Baptist Church along with my colleagues here, and I wanted to thank Pastor Baylock and his wife and the church for organizing and hosting that event. Was also honored to walk with the community in the MLK Walk yesterday, remembering and honoring that great leader. Thank you to the entire ministerial alliance for putting that together. Now, I get to rub it in a little bit with my colleague, Mayor Pro Tem Griffith. He is no longer the only certified tourism ambassador up here. As a board member of the Greater Palm Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau, I was able to attend that certification class and earn a CTA as well. So it is a great program. I'm happy to report that the city, too, has joined in on that, and we've put two of our wonderful frontline people through that program, Melissa Purcell, who you know at the front desk of City Hall, and Anna Morales, they two are now CTAs. And it's a great program that promotes tourism across the valley, the major economic driver for our region, and it's for anybody who interacts with the visiting public and helps them enjoy visiting the city and the valley. So I encourage any of our other hoteliers who might be able to send some of your frontline people there. And finally, since it is the day after the MLK holiday, I'll close tonight with one of my favorite quotes from Dr. King in honor of our celebration of his life, a statement that I think rings true today as it did back during his life. "In the whole history of life is the history of a struggle between good and evil. There seems to be a tension at the very core of the universe. Evil is ultimately doomed by the powerful insurgent forces of good." That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Griffith?
We had a nice, long break. I'm not going to bore everybody with a lot of stuff. I know there's a lot of people here for the Rancho de Oro thing. I don't want to hold that up, but just mention a couple things I did attend. The Desert Hot Springs Women's Club Black and White Dinner, most of us were there. It was a very nice event. The nice thing about this group is they do raise a lot of money that goes towards scholarships for school kids, and I think it's very important that we support efforts like that to give the kids in this area a little leg up and helping them obtain education beyond high school. So a very worthy cause and a very enjoyable night. Also, attended the Senior Center Holiday Dinner. Melody's not here. I want to let her know what a great deal that was. It was a very fun afternoon, and they had the Zumba class, did a little dance routine, which was fantastic. Did the holiday, the Festival of Lights, and again, thank you for city staff. I know Roberta worked super hard on that. It was a very cold night, but a very fun night, and we got some In-N-Out burgers, which was really great. Also, attended the Desert Hot Springs Historical Society Soup Supper. Got to hear the mayor talk, kind of, I guess, a preview of our State of the City speech, so very much looking forward to that. Also, attended the Town Hall that we all did on Saturday. I was a little surprised that there was, it seemed more of us than more of people that wanted to come learn. I know that at the last council meeting, we had some people come up and speak about this and hand out flyers. So it was a real great opportunity to have some questions answered. There were some people there I wasn't expecting, such as Dr. Lyon from the school district, Sunline, Eduardo Garcia, all these people that, people had an opportunity to ask first-person questions, and so hopefully, the next time it happens, we'll get a little more participation. Also, attended the MLK March with everybody up here, and it was an honor to do so, and that is really all I have.
And I'll finish up tonight with just a couple comments. A lot of it was set up here tonight. I wanted to thank our staff for putting on the holiday events. It was just wonderful, again, for our community to have our Christmas holiday parade and then end it at the center of town in a celebration that you could all participate in for almost nothing, unless you wanted In-N-Out, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I also wanted to thank all the groups that put on different events. My family, unfortunately, passed the flu and head cold back and forth, and I missed two events during the holidays because of that. But we're all better, and I know it's a new year, and there's a lot of events coming up this year. If you want to support local charities and stuff, there's quite a few going on in the next few months. I did attend the Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting, and the only, there's two updates that pertain to you here in Desert Hot Springs. One is the fact that there's a new study done on the overall planning for freeway and highway access across the Riverside County for the next, I believe it's thirty years. And it's a proposed draft. They'll be going through Riverside County over the next six months. In that draft is also a measure to put on the ballot to possibly put a half sales, cent sales tax to help build freeways in Riverside County. So it's something for you to look at for the future if you want to be taxed to make your roadways better. It's completely up to you. It goes to the ballot. It'll be everybody in Riverside County. The other thing is the Highway Sixty, truck climbing lanes that's being reconstructed. Two million cubic feet of dirt are being moved over the next year and a half. The six months is coming up that the, I believe, the westbound lanes are down to one, and then it'll switch over to the eastbound lanes to one lane. They ask you to avoid the sixty and use the ten to the two-fifteen if you're going to Riverside or Moreno Valley. For the most part, traffic is not too bad if you get there on the off-times, but if it is high-peak time, you will be backed up because of the one lane, so do avoid that. Again, there's another about a year and a half of that project. Again, two million cubic feet of dirt being moved in there to add two more lanes on each side and to reconstruct the sixty, and that's the Badlands, if you know where you head out of Beaumont into Moreno Valley. Again, I thanked Reverend Shepherd, who was a part of the ministerial fellowship. Over the last, I think, five years, we've been very fortunate to have our Community Cultures Affairs Commission, our city staff, and then groups of individuals in our community take turns on putting on the Martin Luther King Walk in our community and/or events. This year, the ministerial fellowship was reorganized, and they took it upon themselves to start with a small event here and try to grow it over the next few years. And I wanted to thank the reverends and pastors that are part of that group for trying, for putting it on and for continuing to do that event. It was, it was a great walk. We thought there might, they, I think they estimated maybe fifty to a hundred people, and I believe there was a couple hundred people that came out for it. So it was very nice. With that said, everything else has been set up here, and I know there's public business that needs, we need to get to, so we're going to move on to our public hearing tonight. Our first public hearing tonight is- Our first public hearing tonight is going to be item number eight. It's the annexation number 18, Zone 19, to the City of Desert Hot Springs Lighting, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number 2, Rancho del Oro. We're going to have a report given tonight. Mr. Porras, I believe Nick's going to do the report, correct?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, before we get into that...
Yes.
I own property inside Rancho del Oro, and the law is that if you own property within 500 feet, that you must recuse and can't participate in the discussion, since I have a financial interest there. So, I will be leaving the room.
As soon as he's off the dais, Nick, you can begin. While Nick's coming forth and Mr. Betts is stepping off, I'll kind of explain the process. A lot of times, people don't come out to council meetings and very often, and they want to know the process. And there was a few questions. The process will happen tonight. There will be a staff report by Nick, and then there will be, we'll entertain questions by the council to staff about this item. Before we open the public hearing, we'll announce where the ballots will be tallied. If you do have a ballot and you want to hand it in, you can go over to the city clerk's desk and hand that in now, or you can hold it till the end of public hearing. At the end of public hearing, we'll make one last announcement on the ballots, and that will be the final time you can hand a ballot in. Nick will actually talk about where the ballots are going to be counted. You can go and observe the counting of the ballots and be in the presence of those. During public hearing, you can ask questions. It is, we cannot answer your questions because we cannot have a back and forth. This is your opportunity to speak. That is the law. We will write down the questions that are asked, and we'll get those answered after you sit down. We asked if there's a lot of people, that you try not to repeat yourself, as the point was probably made. But if you need to say it, please try to do it within three minutes. We can't stop you if you need to go over to finish your thoughts. But as you have multiple people that want to bring their thoughts forward, if you continue down the path, we'll try to rile you up and make sure you finish your thoughts, so the next person can have that opportunity to speak also. Nick?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the process for the annexation number 18, Zone 19, of the City of Desert Hot Springs Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District Number 2 for Rancho del Oro. Rancho del Oro Residential Subdivision is located on the north side of Mission Lakes Boulevard between Sonora Drive and West Drive, just south of Avenida Huelisco. The subdivision tracks were developed and recorded in 1992 and 1993. There's 259 single-family dwell, uh, single-family homes were completed, and the majority of the perimeter landscaping was installed. On November 19th, 2019, the city council approved Resolution Number 2019054, declaring its intent to annex territory to Landscape and Lightning Maintenance District Number 2, Rancho del Oro. Based on the requirements of California State Constitution, Article 13(c) and 13d, and Proposition 218, the property owner ballot protest procedure was required in order to annex property into the district and levy an assessment on the annexed property. On Friday, December 6th, 2019, ballots were mailed out to each property owner located within the property to be annexed, so they can vote whether they are in favor or opposed to the annexation into the district, including the maximum assessment rate as described in the engineer's report. The public hearing on this matter is scheduled for today, January 21st, 2020. The city council will conduct a public hearing regarding the annexation of Rancho del Oro's subdivision consisting of 259 single-family residential lots, all individually owned, with the exception of open space lots. For property owners that did not receive a ballot and would like to cast their vote, please see the city clerk. In fact, we changed that. If you just go next door to the Senior Center, Webb will be able to provide you with a ballot and an envelope so that you can seal your vote in. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, the ballots will be tallied. Ballots will be tallied at the Senior Center in a public forum. Anyone is welcome to watch as the ballots are tallied. Again, this is just observation. Please do not try to ask questions or have conversation with them while they're doing their job and counting the ballots. If there's no major protest and the ballot procedure is successful, the city council will adopt a resolution ordering the annexation of the property, annexation number 18, Zone 19, to the City of Desert Hot Springs Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number 2, and the collection of assessments. And that's all I have.
And before we open the public hearing, again, I just want to re-announce, anyone that does not have a ballot that would like to get a ballot, you can go to the Senior Center after you've made your comments or before the end of the public hearing and get your ballot and be counted. If you have a ballot and you want to hand it in, you can do it at the city clerk's desk, and/or you can walk over to the Senior Center and hand it to somebody from Webb and Associates. Charmaine's over there from Webb and Associates, so that it can be counted. Again, this is your process, your decision. You can now, I will now open the public, actually, I'll entertain questions from staff. Anybody on the council that would like to make comments or have questions? Okay. With that, we'll move over to opening the public hearing. At this time, I will take any testimony in favor of this item. And it just means you come forth, you state your name, that begins your time. If you'd like to speak in favor of this item, this is your time. I see nobody coming forth. Final call for in favor. We'll move on to the next item. The next item is take public testimony for anybody opposed to this annexation. At this time, you can come forth and make any comments. Please state your name first.
Good evening. My name is Andre Richard, and I live since 2014 in Rancho del Oro. Mr. Mayor, you just said if somebody did not get the ballot, he may be able to come up and get the ballot. I'm not sure. I heard in the past, some people did not get one. Whatever that happened, there were a few some people, but I would even think they are not even here yet, or they will never be here. If they would not even know that you have a ballot sent out, there might be an issue. What I'm going to say tonight are two things, and I'm going to turn them into two questions. The first thing was, when I was coming here the very first time in 2014, I was hearing about this annexation, the complaints, the unsatisfaction. There were a lot of things not going right, and finally, we came to a point where we voted. And I was happy that I had a chance to vote no, as many other people. Disturbing for me is thinking I live in a democracy. We had a vote. People voted against, and now I get a letter that there's another vote. That reminds me of England, the Brexit vote. There are many people, they don't have, they are not happy with the result, and they let, or they want to vote again until somebody gets what he desires to have as outcome. And I think that's not democracy. And the way that was written, it was written like there was never a vote before, and there was no reason given why it's another vote. And I was thinking, somebody threw me back in the past, in a timeline before. So, that was very disturbing. So, a question I have here, why vote again, and what was the reason? And the second thing is, I don't know if somebody caught that in the last event over there when we talked about it. I do honestly not remember all the money amounts we talked about, but I have a feeling that initially, when we had the chance to vote in here for three different versions of poor, mid-range, and luxury development repair, I believe that the very basic money amount you're asking now is, came actually very close to, back then, the medium range of repair. Within a year, everything was raised so high, and I wonder how that can happen, because this is only a repair, right? And now, we come close to, we keep it up in the medium range, and nobody caught that. You increased already the price, and now we go from there and say we can annually increase 2%. You're never gonna get out of me a yes on the vote if that keeps going in a, in a way which is not transparent. So, how you, um, question number two, how you can explain these numbers? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
My name is Brian Cross. I'll do it in questions, like you asked. We'll play Jeopardy. The first thing is, I would like to ask the mayor, has he ever taken an oath to tell the truth? Second, there's rumors going around that if this doesn't pass, our property values will go down 40 to 50%. That is wrong. That should not, and that has been issued out over the internet or emails to different individuals and stuff. So, that, that should not be allowed, because that's not true. We have Realtors that'll argue that, and I would like to ask Herb Moon, he's the one that put it out, to give me those Realtors' names and phone numbers that he put in his email stating that fact, because I would like to go to Board of Realtors and find out if they can lose their license for making that statement. The third is, you said last time that that was the final vote. I'd like to know why we're back here again. Supposedly, I've been told that if the residents come back to the city council and request another vote, then we can have it. So, we're here for another vote. If this passes or doesn't pass, we can come back. If it passes, we can come back next year and ask to vote on it again, to have it taken off the ballot. So, if it's fair for one party to come back and ask for it again, if the residents of that community want to come have it taken away, is that fair? Last thing is, I'd like to ask, why are the, there's a, this last meeting in 2017 that we voted on, and it, you yourself said this was the last, final vote, whether it passes or doesn't pass, is it, it's done? Why are those minutes not on the city record? I talked to an attorney, and he said that those should be on there. It's funny that that's the only minutes missing in that whole timeframe, that those minutes are not on the internet where you can get access to them. He wanted me to ask why that's not done. I believe that is, according to law, it's supposed to be on there. And then, I'm asking for a promotion, a post-probiment of this vote, so that other people can clarify exactly where we're getting, what it takes care of, because there's other people in here that you yourself had promised back in 2017 to fix some things for them, whether it passed or not. They didn't get that done. I think there's a lot of misinformation of what we're actually getting in this and what we're not getting. There's a lot of people believe that the wall's going to be taken care of and all this other stuff be rebuilt if it needs to be. It's not in that paper that was brought up. It's just trees and bushes, and that's it. So, I'd like to clarify that, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? During, during public hearings, we can't have clapping. It influences the vote. It is a law, so please don't do that, or you will have to be, leave the room. Thank you.
Hello. Excuse me. I'm Janine McLeod. I've lived in Rancho del Oro for 25 years. I was here for the meeting in 2017, and we were concerned that some of the options we were given were not desert landscaping. We wanted to make sure we were using low water usage that would be inexpensive to maintain. So, then I get something in the mail last month that says, okay, which felt kind of like a threat, either your property values are going down, or you're doing this. And I have no idea what we're doing. I thought when I came in tonight that I would see all kinds of options, like last time, option A, option B, option C, this is what it's going to look like, this is what we've chosen. I have no idea what I'm voting for. So, I don't really have a question, just a statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone in opposition that would like to speak? Yes, sir. State your name. Your time begins.
My name's Chris Robinson. Good evening, Mayor, council members, management. I am a Realtor and an accountant. I didn't know about the 40% rule of that. Of course, I'm speaking because I'm opposing of that. And then I heard some things I didn't know before, like we had voted for this again. So, if we voted against it already, I would take up again, why are we? But also want to propose, I don't know if this is the form for it, why don't the city put that on a budget to maintain the area of Rancho del Oro? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Anyone in opposition that would like to speak?
Hi, Karen Pacheco, and I feel like I'm just going to reiterate what's already been said. The main question that I keep asking, even as you know, Jan Pie, at the November meeting in the Senior Center, I asked, why are we here? We did the vote already two years ago, and no one has answered that question. So, that's, that's the main question. Everyone's asking, why are we here voting again, when we thought that was the final vote? When can we get an answer to that question?
As I explained at the beginning, as soon as public hearing's done, we'll answer your questions.
Okay. The other thing is, most of us feel that we already pay in a lighting and maintenance district that's supposed to be already taking care of this. At the Senior Center last month, they said that it's getting paid for out of the general fund, which it should not be to maintain that area up there. All we're asking is, what we've been asking every time we come here, is that the city correct the error that was made back in the early '90s? They did correct the streets and took in the streets, things that weren't recorded with the county, but they never did finish with the landscaping area. So, that's all we're asking, is that the city go ahead and correct the error that was made back then and take in the landscaping area and continue to maintain it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. State your name. Your time begins.
My name is Julius Colangelo. I live at 65632 Avenida Ladera in Rancho del Oro. And I want to know, when I first bought in here, that was 26 years ago, the city's been taking care of that area all this time. And what I've seen is, over the years, they've let it deteriorate. Now, they want to put all this new stuff in there and send us the bill. And if they knew the show's intent, what, we're taking care of it. And now, this last time, they sent a, oh, if you don't vote yes, we're going to disconnect all the meters and stop taking care of it. Well, that's just going to degrade the city. And all I'm saying is, I've watched it deteriorate over the years. Something died, they just cut it down, took it away. We didn't get any, you didn't make the landscape equal for everybody. And when the new sections went in, nothing was done. And now, like I said, now it's all coming down on us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am. Take, take your time.
My name is Kristi Courtney, and I have a letter that you guys sent 2017 after the meeting. I thought everybody got it. They said that there was not going to be any more assessment or anything, and it has a day, like, I think I counted like 90 years from, from the year. And I was asking right now, I wasn't going to come because I wasn't feeling good, so I stayed, you know, to honor this meeting. I just came to bring my ballots, so I'm here. And I want to know, if you guys sent a letter that is an error, I never got a retraction, and I still have the letter. So, are you guys aware of it? Did you guys send a letter saying that nothing was going to be, that we didn't have to worry for another god knows how many years? And you have to excuse me, but, you know, with a pill, I cannot remember the day. But I do have the letter, and I will be very glad to provide it to you, because it's from your, from, from your office. And my neighbor got it, too. But the people that I'm sitting with, nobody got that letter. So, was that an error? How come we never got a retraction for it?
As I stated at the beginning, we can't answer your questions during public comments, or during, during the public process. Once it's finished, though, we're all writing down the...
Oh, all right.
And then we'll answer questions.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Last call for opposition? And close the opposition. I will take public testimony on anyone that's in a neutral position that would just like to make a comment. Second call? Final call? All right. At this time, before I close the public hearing, this is the final call. Would anybody like to turn in a ballot or go receive a ballot from Webb and Associates that did not receive a ballot? Yes, sir? No, you cannot make any more comments. This time, you already made your comments. Did you need a ballot? Okay. Anyone else need a ballot? Okay. So, this is the final call for ballots, and we are now closed. No more ballots will be received. The public hearing is closed. I will start with the, a little bit of history. I took on a subcommittee with Joe McKee, who was a former council member on the city council, back in 2000... council, back in 2000, and I want to say 15 is when we started the process. And it was to find closure to requests by citizens in the Rancho Del Oro area that were never recorded. Unfortunately, there is no recording of what happened in the 90s. We have a lot of testimony from longtime residents about what a city council did in the 90s, which no one up here has said on, and what a city government did, which not one member of our government was here in the 90s. And why it wasn't recorded, we don't know. We did have some track maps that were given to us by some residents, and did track those down, about a HOA that was supposed to be proposed at one point, was never followed through by the developer. The unfortunate thing that we did find during that process was that it was the first subdivision in Desert Hot Springs, and there wasn't a precedent at that time about lighting and landscaping maintenance districts. That was something that, at the time, the city council in 2015, 16, wanted to find closure for, due to a lot of discussion by the resident groups. I volunteered with Joe McKee to sit on those. We had multiple meetings. There was a vote, and it failed, correct. After that vote, by law, it can be reopened, and a resident group asked for us to take another shot at it. The reason for is, there was multiple discussions about where the pricing should be. There's a lot of questions here, we'll answer those. The right-of-way is the first, Danny, is it 12 feet, 14 feet? But you have close to 20 feet in the right-of-way, including the block walls. So, yes, you're right, the first 12 to 14 feet is the city's responsibility, and everybody pays into those. There was a lot of slivers of land that were purchased in and around the resort. The city did commit to that, and we are in the process of purchasing those and putting those in the right-of-ways for, I said resort, I meant the community. Also, there was a commitment by that council at the time to spend, I believe, up to $30,000 to reconstruct some of the water lines and everything like that. That was done, and we did spend that money on a general fund, and that's why you do have lush landscaping today, and that's why it is green, and it is still growing, because the city council did commit that. We also committed to initial cleanup of the Rancho Del Oro landscaping at taxpayers' money, not yours. If a, a ballot measure was passed, add to whatever cost you should see that at, and that's what the, the public meetings were for, is to find that peace. So, with that said, that's kind of the history on why we're back here. I'll let the, the attorney answer some of the legal questions, I'll let the subcommittee answer some of the other questions. I stepped away from the subcommittee due to some of the responsibilities, and Ms. Pie and Mr. Gardner took that over. And I'll let them answer maybe some of these questions, because they were at these meetings. And then, we'll get back to making sure that all your questions were answered before we move on. Who wants to start?
I'll start. How we got here today? I had discussions with certain members of your community. One was regarding assessments that was taken. The idea was that people didn't understand the assessments that were being taken. I spoke with Webb. We got it all cleared up. People were given the right amount, amount of money. Next thing was about the landscaping, and I'm being told what is wrong with the landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. So, I go back to city hall to figure out what's supposed to be done. And then, I find out that the city has been paying for the irrigation and what have you, but should not have been. So, then, that's how we got here. There are special districts throughout the city where we pay for, no, where they pay for their landscaping. And in my mind, to have one, one residential area that doesn't do every, what all of the other cities, all of the other properties are doing, is not correct. And if part of it was repair, what the, the city said we would do is the repair on, on this one. The reason why it goes up 2% is because it's two, and tell me if I'm wrong, it's 2% or less than CPI. And that is the structure that we have for everybody. It's the same structure that we have with public safety tax. Whether or not your property goes down, that's, I'm going to give to the realtors, and I'm going to give to you. If, if the vote fails, and we stop the irrigation on the city side, you have to tell me how your property will look then, or talk to your realtors. But I'm going to suspect that something may happen. You could go for another vote, but if it fails, you could go for another vote, but the city doesn't have to accept that for 12 months. If the city puts it in the budget that goes back to, we're not supposed to have it in the budget. I'll be honest with you, I'm surprised the other property owners haven't had a fit, because we've only done things for one set of property owners. There's no grandfather. LMD, I'm going to let you explain the LMD. And I don't know anything about the letter in 2007.
17.
17, 2017.
Thank you. The mayor appointed council member Pie and myself to subcommittee to work on this. And as the new guy on the block at the time, my concern is not necessarily the action or inaction of the past, it's how do we get past that and into the future? The current landscaping at Rancho Del Oro is paid for out of this city's general fund. We can not do that, absolutely cannot do that. It is not fair to the rest of the city. RDO residents have been benefiting at the expense of the rest of the city. All of the other organized subdivisions in landscape, lighting, maintenance districts across the city are paying a share each year to maintain that. It is not fair to the remainder of the city. It's not fair to Hacienda Heights, Rolling Hills, Agua Dulce, Mountain View, any of those subdivisions. We are, all of those residents are paying for their own landscape, lighting, and maintenance district, and the Rancho Del Oro lighting and maintenance district. It's not, that they don't live in. That is not fair. That's why this has to end tonight. So, plain and simple, we sat down with the RDO residents, we worked out a plan, we came up with a good compromise, I think. You're getting a proposed landscape and lighting maintenance district that is less than most of the other landscape and lighting, maintenance districts in the city. Ask your neighbors over at Rolling Hills how much they're paying. Ask your neighbors out in Skyborne how much they're paying for their landscape, lighting, and maintenance district versus what you will be paying if this passes tonight. And again, if it doesn't pass, the city is going to stop paying that. It's not fair for the rest of the taxpayers in this city to be paying for the landscape and lighting maintenance district in Rancho Del Oro. It's simply not fair. If we don't stop doing it, I would fully expect a lawsuit from some of these other property owners out there that are paying for that. Then, it really will go away. So, what you get before you, what you're voting on, is a very simple, very plain, but nice landscaping system that will work.
Please don't interrupt, please don't interrupt the meeting or the council members when they're speaking.
So, let's hope this passes. I'm, I'm optimistic. I know a lot of hard work went into working and meeting with individuals across the Rancho Del Oro development. The folks that came to us and asked us to bring this forward have done an awful lot of hard work, more so than, than, than they, than they really needed to in order to get this to pass. And I want to thank them for all of their hard work and appreciate very much everything that they've done to help get this out, get this passed, and get this designed. So, I don't have anything else to add to that. You?
There is a project for how the irrigation, what have you, will work. However, we did say that there could be a subcommittee that would monitor that and meet with the city if it's not to your satisfaction.
Okay, so, I'm going to answer some more questions. We're not going to take questions, I already explained the process, okay? So, I'm going to, I'm going to answer some of the questions, and hopefully, I'll get the answers that you want. There was a commitment to fix, there was a commitment to fix the wall and take down the trees that were dead and needed to be trimmed. That will be committed if this passes, as committed in the last vote. If you had passed it, that would be done. So, whoever told you that wasn't to be done, if you were at the meetings, Nick was there, that is a commitment by the city of council that that will be done as part of your assessment, that you'll get a brand, you'll get all your wall fixed, you'll get it painted, you'll get all your trees trimmed. There were some people had problem with trees that were over lurching in their backyards, causing problems with their swimming pool. All that can be addressed with this. The problem with fixing it now is that we don't have rights to those, that, that's passed the right-of-way. So, the city of council can't go in there, because it's actually technically private land at this point. And if it doesn't pass, then the homeowners would be responsible for it, because it's, it's not anybody's land at that point. No, no ballots. If you didn't receive a ballot, there's, there's a fair process to it. We actually have a list that's produced, and the ballots are sent per, per that assessor's list, and you can actually question, Nick back there, he can actually get you the process on how those ballots were sent out. The, it was a suggested amount, there was a question about how do we come to the amount that was going to be assessed, there was a suggested amount by the city staff on what it would cost to get you the basic landscaping, all the stuff that you needed, and that's where that amount came from. There was a question about the mayor taking an oath of truth. Well, I'll say this, that was a dig at me, I get it. Not everybody likes me. What I will say is this, what I will say is this, I'm going to ask you to stop one more time before I escort you out, okay? Thank you. It's a fair process by law here at the public hearing. Then, go to Sacramento and change it. That's all I got to say. So, what I will say is that a city council lied to you back in the 90s, because they did not memorialize this. So, we have to take the brunt of it now, to memorialize something. Whether it passes or not, it's going to be memorialized tonight. Everyone has a right to come back, and I'll have the city attorney explain that, to put something back on the ballot as a lighting, lighting and landscaping maintenance district. So, I'll have you answer that before I go into the next answers to some of the questions.
So, there's two ways pretty much to initiate a, an assessment district. It's either city-initiated or voter-initiated. So, I think I've been here, I want to say since 2011 or 2012, I've been working, I think, on that, this, this, you know, Rancho Del Oro project for probably about that, that amount of time. I've also worked, met at least half a dozen times with Herb Moon and Steve Saboda. We, the, the city tried to initiate this process, and did initiate this process. By the way, there's absolutely nothing to preclude the city to initiate this process to specifically answer the question. So, the city, if, if the vote fails, and if, and if the city feels that it would like to initiate the process again, it may do so. I believe, and I, don't quote me on this, but I believe it, it cannot do so within a year of it failing. The, the flip side is, is that the, the residents could also initiate a, a similar process. It is a little bit different, but basically, the residents can also initiate this. And so, when we got a petition a while ago to initiate, you know, again, forming an assessment district, we took it on ourselves to redo the process. And so, it was kind of a long, long way. I have a lot of history with the project as well, but it's, basically, the answer is, it can be brought by the city again. It, it, merely because the, the voters have voted on it, does not stop the city from initiating the process.
So, to answer the question, anyone can bring this back in a year? If it passes or fails, that was your question. I didn't, again, I'm not going to ask you to stop again, but I have to ask you to stop. This is a public process, a public hearing by state law. So, my next question is, if you sit and listen, you might get your question answered, but you want to make a dramatic scene and walk out, please. Why back again on the ballot? I think we answered that question. In 2017, it was, yes, a letter was sent out, the process was stopped, it was 12 months, the law says the law. You can bring it back, whether you want to get rid of it, or you want to bring it, too. There was a group of residents that wanted to propose it again, the city said, you know, it's something we really want to see, we want to see that property lush. I drive by every day, and I would love to see it continue to look nice. The city council has committed to you, the Rancho Del Oro residents, over the last 10 years that I've been on the city council, hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money that did not have to be to keep certain areas of that green. And we've done that on trying to find a way to find resolution and get this memorialized. Right-of-way explained, will it be, will you get a bill? Yes, you'll pay, if this passes, you'll pay the assessment, yes. And you'll pay for the block wall to be fixed, you'll pay for the landscaping to be watered, you'll pay for landscaping. The city's also committed to putting together a subcommittee of Rancho Del Oro to decide what type of landscaping that you want in there. Do you want to keep the current trees? Do you want different types of lush landscaping? Do you want grass in certain areas? Do you not want grass in certain areas? That would be the choice of, this is the amount of money you have, and this is what you could afford to put in that area, and you, the residents, would be able to determine that. I believe that's all the questions that were asked at this point. At this point, we're going to take a recess, oh, we're not going to take a recess, we're going to go on to the next item, we're going to, we're going to take, we're going to recess this item while the vote is made. You can go over, you can catch city staff out here to ask any questions, and you can go over there and make your, and watch the tally if you choose to. I just ask if you have any comments, questions, and you need to talk outside while the rest of the meeting goes on. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to item number nine, which is continuing from December 3, 2019, annexation number 37 to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District number 2010-1, services for APN 665-110-006 located east of Little Brongo Road and north of Dillon Road. This is our finance director, Mr. Buckheim.
Thank you, mayor and council. So, continuing from December 3, 2019, the city council approved a resolution of intention on, in October 2019, to annex the property on Dillon Road into the...
Mr. Buckheim, Mr. Buck, I'm sorry, I forgot to call Mr. Buck back in the room.
Sorry.
All right, he's seated now. Please continue.
Okay. And once again, to annex property on the, on Dillon Road into the Community Facilities District number 10, 2010-1. The purpose of these proceedings will to, will be to levy special taxes on parcels of taxable property that is considered developed. These taxes will provide for certain maintenance services that are necessary to meet increased demands placed upon the city. And that is my staff report.
All right, well, any, any questions for staff? I don't see anybody in the queue, we'll move on to opening the public hearing, continue from December 3, and we'll take any public testimony at this time. Anybody like to speak on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by council? And at this time, we'll take a motion to adopt a resolution, calling for an election. And please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
At this time, we'll hold the election and canvass the election.
The property owner has voted in favor.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion to accept, adopt a resolution declaring election results.
So moved.
Any other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move on, item number 10, continue from December 3, 2019, creating a special tax area 43 for APN 665-110-006 located north of Dillon Road, east of Little Brongo Road, within the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Mr. Buckheim?
Thank you. So, this is for the same piece of properties in the previous agenda item, but this is to create Zone 43 to assess special taxes in the public safety property tax. The special taxes levied by the district provide funding for public safety services, which, and that's the rest of my report.
Thank you. At this time, we entertain questions with staff. I see none. I'll open the public hearing, that has been continued since December 3. the public hearing that has been continued since December 3rd, 2019. Anybody would like to speak on this item? I see nobody coming forth. I will close the public hearing at this time and I'll entertain questions and discussion by council. I see none. At this time, we'll hold the election and canvass the election.
The property owner has voted in favor.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance establishing a special public safety tax area, Zone 43. There is a motion and a second. There's no vote or discussion. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betts voting no.
Move on to their administrative calendar. Our first item on the calendar is the addendum to the Third Amendment and restatement of the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, CVAG Joint Powers Agreement. Mr. Sorellio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Torres Martinez Desert Kowia Indians Tribe has requested to rejoin CVAG or otherwise known as Coachella Valley Association of Governments. The CVAG Executive Committee voted unanimously to, unanimously to allow the tribe to rejoin CVAG via the addendum that's included in your packet. CVAG's JPA or Joint Powers Agreement requires each member jurisdiction to approve the addendum. Therefore, this item is before you tonight.
And I just wanna add from the executive committee, this was a request by the tribe to rejoin. They have a very active member of their board at this point that is very active with CVAG and wanted to make sure that they had a say in some of the issues facing our region. So it was very supportive by the executive committee. But each member agency needs to vote on it. So we'll entertain, I'll take any public comments on this. I see none. All right. What are you pointing at? Oh, where's, Mr. Betts? Oh, sorry, Mr. Betts.
Yeah, thanks. So I take it, there were some questions a while back, maybe a couple years ago about the, how these things go about. And I guess that's gotten sorted out now, you know, reflecting the bylaws, whether it has to be done at an annual meeting, whether it can be handled the way it was. And I'm guessing by the unanimous vote at the executive committee that everybody's satisfied this is now following the proper procedure?
Advised by our attorney, yes.
Okay, good. All right.
Thank you. I should, advised by the CVAG attorney, not our attorney, which is advising us now that we can vote on this piece. So. Any other questions by council? All right, entertain There is a motion by Mr. Griffith and seconded by Mr. Gardner. And if there's another discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move on to item number 12, resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax refunding bonds for and behalf of the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District number 2006-1. Improvement area number one, approving and directing the execution of the fiscal agent agreement, approving sale of such bonds and approving other related documents in action. Mr. Buckheim?
Yeah, so the Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District number 2006-1 in 2008 issued $2,080,000 in improvement area one, special tax bonds, facilities improvements in the neighborhood. The bonds refinanced in 2010 to take advantage of lower interest rates. The current principal balance of the bond is $1,910,000. And there is an opportunity once again to refinance the bond at a lower interest rate. This refinancing will net an estimated average savings per parcel of $116 a year for, for the residents of the neighborhood. The bonds, I'd like to note that the bonds are not a debt obligation of the city, but of this facilities district. Staff recommends council adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds on the, on the behalf of the Community Facilities District number 2006-1. Michael Bush with Urban Futures and David Farmer with Jones Hall are here for any questions.
At this time, I will open for public comments. Is there anybody who would like to make comments on this? I see no one coming forth. I'll open questions by council. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I can't imagine there'd be any opposition from the residents to save. And what is it, $113,000? The only, or $113 a month. Is that a year?
Yeah.
Okay. So the only question I have is the finance guy out there is going, yeah. The, the bond amount now is 1.9 and it's not going up. It's just, is there any fees or anything that's increasing the original bond amount?
No, Mr. Betts. The, the fees are included in the savings assumptions that Jeffrey presented to you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And actually, we've, since the staff report was drafted, we've received bank bids and that the savings will actually be a little bit more than what's in the staff report for the residents. The bids came in lower than we estimated in the staff report.
So this is for basically all the residents out of Skyborne?
That's correct. Everyone that's being assessed.
Now, the assessment was only for where building permits have been issued, but it doesn't cover every lot? Is that the way that originally read in the original agreement? How, how are the bonds originally supposed to have been applied? Who is supposed to pay those? I know the builder up there-
Property owners.
Huh?
Property owners.
So property owners-
Within the district of what was, so it's not the whole Skyborne? It's just the, the developed parcels?
But there's been a distinction made in the staff report that it's where building permits have been issued, but there's some lots that are hanging out there where a building permit wasn't issued, but they're still part of this original district. So how is that calculated?
If, if there are any of those, I think I know what you're referring to. If there are any of those parcels where a building permit was issued at the time the bonds, but the property's still owned by the developer, the developer's paying the assessment.
Okay, what about the parcels? It's already been subdivided. The parcels, but no building permit was issued, but they're parcels on a map.
Those are other parcels that will be included in other improvement areas for future financing if they get that far.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying is, in the existing improvement area that's covered by these bonds, are there any mapped parcels that aren't paying the fee? And, and what does the original assessment say should happen? I'm just trying to make sure that whoever the developer is out there isn't getting a free ride off of all the homeowners.
Absolutely is not getting a free ride. We made sure of that. So I think what you're referring to is within the developed area in question, the improvement area in question, there are villages one and two. We are only referring to the developed parcels. The only savings goes to the residents directly and nothing will be given to the developer, whether it's within the developed area currently or outside of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Betts, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move on to item number 13, consideration of ordinance increasing salary of city council members and mayor. Mr. Rainey.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. This item before you is a consideration of an ordinance to increase the salaries for council members and mayor, and the mayor. Currently, council members receive a base salary of $550 a month while the mayor receives $650. And those amounts were decided 18 years ago in 2002. So our staff reports exhibit once shows you an average of compensation amounts throughout the other eight cities in the Coachella Valley here in the year 2020. And in order to meet that average, we would need to increase the base salaries for council members up to $1,111 and for the mayor up to $1,429. Should you choose to pass this ordinance, the increase will have a fiscal impact of approximately $12,103 on this year's fiscal budget. And for future years going forward, the total increase amounts to $36,309. So staff is asking that the city council consider introducing for first reading and read by title only an ordinance of the city council amending section 2.04.020 of chapter 2.04 of the City of Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, increasing the salary of city council members and the mayor. That concludes my staff report.
First, I'll take public comments. Anyone like to speak on this item, please come forth. State your name. Your three minutes will begin.
My name's Dwayne Prezon.
Down at the bottom, there's a button. Name a button.
My name's Dwayne Prezon, and I can't imagine not having a pay increase for 18 years. What y'all do is priceless for the city. I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Final call?
Wait.
She was debating.
I'm in.
State your name and your three minutes will begin.
Hi, I'm Jessica Gilbert. I've lived here for 27 years. I've seen many people set up at this DS. You guys are awesome. You deserve a raise, and I'm proud of all of you and all the improvements you've done in our community. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Final, yes. Mr. Nadell. He's sort of a jem pie. When he speaks, you listen. Yes, I know.
About a while, and I've mentioned it to some of you. I think it's just insane that 18 years later, you're being, the mayor and council being paid what you are. And the reason it bothers me is because it implies that this is a city that doesn't matter. It implies that we have voters and residents who don't care. And it implies that we don't have real problems and real accomplishments. And that's not true in this city. And it's because of the council and the mayor that the city is in good, getting in better shape and is in good shape. The other thing is, it's a real disincentive to have such a low pay for a young married couple with kids who, and the husband or the wife decide they wanna run for council. It's a financial, potentially a financial burden for a lot of people. As a taxpayer, I am more than in favor of this increase in pay. And that's all I wanna say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Final call? Close public comments this time. Ms. Pie?
I wanna give you some institutional history on this. Before 2002, I was on the council then, and the mayor wanted to give city council and the mayor an increase. We had not given staff increases for four years. My term was up in 2002, and that's when it happened. Now, the next time that it happened, I wouldn't consider it then because we had not paid staff. Now I'm okay with it because staff is taken care of. But just wanted to give you some institutional history.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Pie. You kind of were touching on what I wanted to touch on. It's a funny feeling to be sitting up here voting for a pay increase for myself. But that being said, when I ran last year and when I got elected, one of my priorities was to make sure that our staff was fully reimbursed for all of the effort they put in in the, in the years of the Great Recession when we had to reduce their pay and that we had a city police department that was fully staffed as well. We've reached those goals. The city is in a tremendously good financial position right now. We have a, thanks to our consultants, thanks to the hard work of our staff and the council, we are in the best financial shape we have ever been in a while. We, and ever, we've ever been in in the history of this city. We brought our city staff up to where their pay should be. We have a fully staffed police department. We had sworn in another officer today, and we have another officer on the way. We're at a point now where it is time, after 2002, this many years, to reassess this. Now, we didn't, none of us, I think, up here took this job, ran for this job in order to make a lot of money. But what it shouldn't do is cost a lot of money to sit up here. And this brings us up to par with the rest of the cities in this, in this valley. We were always the lowest. It was embarrassing to be the lowest in the city, in, in the valley, given our population, given everything that's going on. We are now right in the middle with everybody else. And so I think it's an appropriate time to do this. And as awkward as it is to vote for an increase for myself, I am appreciative of all of the hard work. And I think that, that staff has put in into analyzing this and bringing it forward, as well as the council and all their work in getting our staff up to pay where they should be and our, our police department funded. So I think it's, it's in order and in time. And I appreciate the support of the residents who have bothered to come out and testify for something like this. You don't often see citizens supporting pay increases for their elected officials. And that's very rewarding and very heartwarming to see that. We have earned the trust of the members of the, of this, and the citizens of this city. So thank you.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I've been on a few orientations of new council members, you know, get, show them the ropes, what's going on as they've just been elected. And, and I haven't seen one of them that even knew what their pay was when they got up here. And I know I didn't. It was kind of a surprise. Oh, really? Okay. And it's not a much, but that's the first surprise you get. The second surprise you get is you find out that $550 a month, you better set aside some money in your family budget because it's costing you to serve up here. With the meetings you have to attend to, the mileage you put on your cars, and I know there's a car allowance out there, but that probably covers about half of what you're burning up on the expense of your car. So, and, you know, the consideration is, if somebody else is gonna come up here and move into these seats at some point in time, it shouldn't be a consideration of, geez, I'd really like to serve, but my family budget can't handle this. And I don't have the exact number on how much I spend every month, but every meeting you go to, that's not an official city meeting, whatever club or function, you go meet constituents out for lunch, you know, you're, you know, the reality is, well, I'm happy to meet with you. We're sitting around the table. I'll pick up mine, you pick up yours. But you're having a lunch that you weren't anticipating, you know? And so I, I don't think it's a huge increase. I know the news was out there with a doubling of the rate, but it's a doubling of a, what I consider to be a low number. And I think staff's done a good job to go through and find out to justify that this is within a range that's not exorbitant. Who is the highest city out there? I forgot. I didn't look. Who? How much, what, they're way up there, huh?
1500.
Yeah, okay. All right. So anyhow, I'm just trying to, anyhow. All right. So I, I don't have any problem with this. It's long overdue. I think it was probably 15 years ago before I was on the council. I had suggested to a council back then when it came up that they needed to do this, and they didn't. And maybe at some future point, set something out where it goes incrementally, because it's always a bad time when you have to have this doubling of something. This is something that went too long without getting done. So I'm, I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Griffith?
I know. I wanna bring up the, the issue that people talk about doubling. The salaries are doubling. So just to give you some, some context, one, 18 years is a long time to go without any kind of increase. The base salary is really not that much. If you calculate it out on an hourly basis, based on how much time you spend driving to meetings, being in meetings, today, I've been in meetings all day since roughly 10:00 AM. It comes out to anywhere between $5.50 and $7 an hour. That's not a lot of money. As a matter of fact, it's even below minimum wage for the federal amount. Doubling it, you're gonna get it up there probably around $11, $12 an hour. What's not considered here is the cost, and, and I'm not asking for it to be, but just for people to understand that some of us work full-time jobs. And so I know for me, my job is 60 to 70 hours a week, and then I put all this extra time here. The mayor has a family, and so all the time he spends on that is time that he doesn't get to spend with his wife and his kids. Those are things that no one's asking for, but I think it, I think it behooves us to take a look at the overall picture. It's not a lot of money. I know there's gonna be some people that are gonna be out there and they're gonna, there's gonna be the negatives. You know, maybe we wanna think about, should we get combat, combat pay for having to deal with the negativity on social media? The reality is, it's not a lot of money. It's not really a big hit from the budget perspective. And I think that everybody that I've worked with up here works very, very hard and is very worthy of this. So I would be voting for.
If nobody else in the queue, if there's no other questions from council, I'll consider a motion at this time.
Move for the motion.
Move staff recommendation.
There's a motion by Ms. Pie, seconded by Mr. Gardner. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is first reading of an ordinance of the city council amending section 2.04.020 of chapter 2.04, City Council of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, increasing the salary of city council members and the mayor. The ordinance will return at the February 4th meeting for second reading and adoption.
Thank you very much. Item number 14 is a discussion item. Per our policies here that were changed recently, no, the mayor and/or two council members can't just add items for action on the city council without a consideration to put it on the ballot or the agenda. Thank you. I was getting late. The agenda without discussion. So what I'm bringing forth tonight is I've had a concern by some residents here that we as a city council years ago changed the, the- that we, as a city council, years ago changed the, the dog breeding ordinance in Desert Hot Springs meeting, that you could not breed your animals. Basically, what we're trying to do is stop puppy mills, but it actually stopped actual licensed individuals that were breeding correctly. And so they've asked us to look at some ordinances. I think the city of Riverside, the city attorneys looked at some other ordinances throughout the state, that there is a pathway to allow legal breeding within our community that would keep away from the puppy mills. So I would like to bring a discussion at the next council meeting about this. Was anybody in the public would like to make public comments on this? Okay? And I'd just like this item to be entertained. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, so if I understand the procedure here, we're not debating the particulars of puppy mills or whatever you want to call them. This is just a matter of whether we want to move this forward to a full-on agenda item.
Correct. With the city attorney looking into ordinances and how other cities do it, so you have full information on what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay. I'm, I'm supportive of moving it forward and limiting debate to just the subject ham, which is whether or not to go forward or not.
Mr. Gardner?
I, I will tell you that I've been, I'm, I'm all for taking a look at this and perhaps reviewing it. I, I, I do have a lot of concerns about overbreeding, overpopulation, pets, dogs running loose in the city. We've done a really good job with our new animal control staff, cutting that down. But there are so many unwanted pets, so many dogs in our shelters and in the county shelters that I would be, at this point, I'm, I'm open to a discussion on it. I can't tell you that I would support it at this point.
Ms. Pie?
I make a motion to consider an item regarding, at, American dog kennel breeding ordinance on a future agenda.
A motion by Ms. Pie, seconded by Mr. Griffith. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, we'll bring that back to the next agenda. At this time, do we have any update on the vote over there?
Yes, I was told that they're about ten, fifteen minutes away from completing.
All right, we'll recess until eight o'clock.